Okay, we're ready to start the meeting. We had a previous executive session, so we're in session now. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the January 14 regular meeting?
So.
Second.
Any corrections or changes? We already had one, some changes that were done through email. All those in favor? We have an opportunity for public comment. Okay, so we're gonna move right on to our recognition of community partners. So this is the first year that we've done this. We've always had generous donors in our community that have given gifts, whether large or small, to our community that it's vital to the running of our school, really. It's things that we don't have to find in our budget. It's things that kids are using every day. So we want to take an opportunity to invite some of the donors, all of the donors from last year into the, into our meeting today, so we could just thank them. And we have a little cake that we'd like to share. So we have a few here today. We have a few members from the Rhinebeck Science Foundation. So I, Melissa and Johnny Lehane, Sareen O'Connor, Jen Shear, and Kyle Hart. Thank you very much for being here. Rich Matthews from Mobile Station, thank you so much for being here and thank you for your donation. And Gary and Carol Hack, thank you for your donation this year, we appreciate it. And Laura Shulkin, standing in the back, thank you for your donation. So thank you for being here, we appreciate you coming out, and we can't thank you enough for what you've done for our school. We are, we do have cake, and we are gonna take a break in the meeting, but first, we have a presentation from our fifth graders that would like to do first before we take that break, if everyone can wait for that.
So, we're here to talk to you tonight about something that we do in our classroom, and it's called flexible seating. And this is our, my fourth year implementing a fully flexible classroom, and I have some amazing students who have volunteered their time, and they're gonna talk to you about what they like. And then there's a short video after.
Hi, I'm Louise. I like flexible seating because it helps, it helps me being, because, because I am able to move more around the classroom.
Hi, I'm Lauren. I like flexible seating because it is comfortable and I can sit wherever I want.
Hi, I'm Riley. I like flexible seating because I have more freedom and I can, I have more freedom and I can move around.
Hi, I'm Jack, and I like flexible seating because you can sit where you want as long as you're productive.
And the students have prepared a little video montage. I apologize for the sound quality. So I get my seats from Donors Choose, which has been a great avenue. I pick up what I can find on the side of the road. I use the yearly budget that we're allocated from Brett. And I also utilize my Scholastic points. What do you like best about flexible seating?
I like flexible seating because you can sit wherever you want. You can choose where you want to sit. I like flexible seating because you can choose a good place to sit without getting distracted.
I like flexible seating because you can move around the classroom anywhere you want. You can sit wherever you want. You don't have to sit with the same person every day.
What do you like about flexible seating?
I like about flexible seating because I like to move around the classroom every day.
I like flexible seating because you can sit wherever you want and you can find a place that's comfortable. I really like to not get distracted.
I like that you can do it where you're comfortable and distracted.
What do you like about flexible seating?
I like to sit with new people every day. I like to stay with new people.
I like flexible seating because you can sit in a new chair every day and choose where you want to sit.
I like flexible seating because you can sit anywhere where you feel most comfortable, anywhere you can sit without listening and studying.
I like that you can, whatever you want. I like that you can sit wherever you want. I like flexible seating because you can change your theory and you get to learn things.
What do you like about flexible seating?
I like flexible seating because you can just sit wherever you want and you pick where's best for you.
I like flexible seating because I can sit wherever you feel that's the way with the stuff that.
Thanks.
I like flexible seating because you get to sit where you sit when like, if someone's like, distracted, you can sit your seat. You don't have to, you don't have to sit next to the same person every day.
And do you pick the same spot every night?
No.
How do you pick where you're gonna sit?
I just find a spot and sit there, and I don't argue with anyone. If someone says like, oh, I was sitting there, I was getting, I don't care. I like flexible seating because you can pick where you want to sit.
Thanks.
I like flexible seating because you don't have to sit in the same spot every day.
And how do you pick where you're gonna sit?
I usually, like, if I sit in the front or in the back, I'll sit in the back and I'll sit in the back.
What do you like about flexible seating?
I like different chairs and you don't have to sit in one spot at a time.
What do you like about flexible seating?
That you can sit wherever you want and like, and you can be, and you can go places that other classrooms can't really go. And these clubs are good with the market, so you're sitting all colors next to the same people, but you get to know each other a lot. And yes!
That concludes our presentation.
First of all, I want to thank you for coming to our meeting. It's very difficult to get up here and speak in front of everybody, so we can't thank you enough. It's important for us to learn about what goes on in your classroom, and it helps inform the work that we do, so we can't thank you enough for coming. You all did a great job, and your classroom looks like the most fun place to be. Does any of the board members have any questions? This is, I do, this is the first year that you've had flexible seating?
No, this is my fourth year.
Fourth year you've had it. And so you get to, every day you can, you pick a seat, and you have to stay in that seat for the whole day, and then the next day you can pick a different seat?
They can sit in that seat for the morning, and then they can move to a different location in the afternoon. They all have like a portable desk, it's like a bin that they keep all of their supplies in, so they just grab their bin, and then they can find their spot.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyways, thank you so much. If you want, we're gonna be having cake, if you wanna stay around for that. So I would ask if we can... So I'm gonna ask if we can suspend the rules in order to have cake, so we can, again, I wanted to say thank you to all our donors that are here. It really means a lot to the district for what you do. We're gonna stop for a few minutes and have some cake.
So join us.
All right, back in session, and if everybody, if no one's opposed, I was going to just...
Thanks, Rich. See you soon.
Offer another opportunity of public comment. We had some public that was able to, not able to be here, the first one. If that's okay with everybody, the cake?
Sure.
All right, we're gonna offer another opportunity for public comment.
Hi, Jen Hamood, president of the Rhinebeck Science Foundation, and I just wanted to say thank you for thanking community members for generously participating in this process. We thank you for your hard work, and we appreciate what you do weekly, and thank you. And thank you to Joe Phelan for his last official, district last official meeting as superintendent, not interim.
You're right. I guess.
Congratulations. And a buck to you.
Thank you.
And, you know, we all wish you the best, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other public comment?
I don't know if you guys remember me?
Here's your seat.
Thank you for inviting us all, it's a really nice gesture, and it's really lovely. Cake is always good. And Joe, congratulations.
Thank you.
It's really, it's exciting for you, I hope all the best for you.
Thank you very much.
So, I haven't been back in a while, and I've been reading along, and wanted to share that, you know, being one of the inaugural members of Long Range Planning Committee, I'm getting a little disheartened by the lack of forward motion. And I keep reading in minutes about how hard the idea and the conversation about restructuring the district is, and it is hard, and change is hard, and we've known this for a long time. So, what I'm really hoping is that the administration can start doing the work, and stop talking about how hard this is, but really to knuckle down and look at what different opportunities there are for kids and teachers, and what we can do to make, continue to make Rhinebeck a better place every day. So, I'm really looking forward to seeing your report about all of the opportunities and possibilities for the future of the district.
Thank you for all of it.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, so we'll move on to, where are we? Mr. Boucher?
Yep.
Annual Athletic, Interscholastic Athletic Report.
Good evening. It's like a basketball game. We may have a nice comeback, and then kinda ran out of gas. I switched things up this year, I thought I'd start rather than go with the budget stuff, start with some of the successes from the fall, because it was a pretty successful fall for us. In terms of our championships, our boys and girls soccer team won the division championship of the league. The boys went on and won the conference championship, and then won the league championship down in Walkill. It was a rainy night. And then went on and won the section championship, and then the regional championship, and then, well, yes, the state championship, where they played Lansing again, which is the team that they had beaten previous time in the semifinals. So, that was a very successful season. We had a great night on December 18th, lots of community members, it was, it was a nice, nice occasion. Thank you, Diane, for coming and representing the board. I know the boys really appreciated it. Other state news, in terms of our athletes, Brooke Pochas, a sophomore on our girls swim team, went to the state meet up in Ithaca. She finished in the top 35 in the 50 free, and she participated in the 100 fly, finishing 78th. I wasn't supposed to say that, but she finished 78th, and she's promised me she's gonna improve on that next year. In addition to the accomplishments on the field or in the pool, we also had a great season for our scholar athletes, shall we call them. We had 50 all MHAL academic and New York State Scholar athletes this fall. To be on that team, to be recognized in that manner, you have to have an average over 90, unweighted, during the season in which you are participating. Having 50 of our varsity athletes do that, so there were 94 varsity athletes, so 53% of the varsity athletes had an, maintained an average over 90 during the fall season. That's pretty impressive. For me, and I was talking to Dr. Davenport about this as well, what's even more impressive is this is the first time since I've been doing this that every one of our teams has been recognized as a New York State Scholar Athlete team. So to get New York State Scholar Athlete team status, you have to have 75% of your roster have a cumulative average of 90 or above. So this is March the first time for that. So I think this really goes to, to let everybody know what a great place Rhinebeck is, not only athletically, but also academically. These kids work really hard, and they will all be recognized for their accomplishments on Wednesday, June 10th, 7:00 PM in the auditorium, and this is your formal invitation on the calendar now. To the New York State Public High School updates, and all of this is right there for you. Our bed, it's been quiet on the beds front for a while because we didn't have any errors on the state level. Our number next year is 242, and as of right now, there are no proposed changes to classifications, so we should remain a C school for baseball, basketball, softball, and soccer, and we'll be a C school for cross-country, field hockey and football, and volleyball. Now, field hockey and football, those are merged programs, and there's a formula for that, but even with the adding of the other schools, we do stay at the C level. For lacrosse, we would be a D school, again, that's a merged program. Those sports have modified numbers. The New York State Public High School Athletic Association dues front, at this point, there will not be an increase to those dues, although there is talk that in the future, there will be an increase to the dues. Not significant, but they're hearing from their auditors that their fund balance is starting to shrink, and it needs to go up, so they're in the process of discussing that. Section 9 MHAL update, the regional office of Interscholastic Athletics, which is run out of the Orange Olster BOSI's, so we're all familiar with how BOSI's budgets operate. They basically tell us what they're going to get, and we give it to them. We don't have a say into what happens with that budget. We were told last Wednesday that there will be an increase there of 2,250 for next year. I think that, speaking with Tom, we should be able to stomach that within the budget that we've already looked at. Section 9, there are no dues increases for section 9 for next year, so that should all be good. Yes?
What do we currently pay that the increase is 2,250?
So, we are currently paying, all right, so it's based upon your classification. So, we've been paying at the B level, and they somehow forgot that we went to C this year, so we're gonna get a refund this year, we're gonna have our bill adjusted. We are currently paying 9,000 and change, so it's gonna go to 11,000 and change. If we go back up to B, then it goes up from there, but I don't anticipate right now, unless New York State really modifies their numbers, that we're gonna go back to B. I think we're gonna stay C. Some of our sports, we could actually drop down to D, but I think, looking at what's happening straight across the board in New York, I think they will adjust those numbers, and I think we should be comfortable at C for quite a few years.
And if I remember, the dues, this covers the referees?
So the dues, those regional office dues cover the assigning of officials, the payment of officials, and that's a rather large task. I was just speaking with Germantown, their varsity boys' basketball coach used to be the athletic director. They're looking to possibly move to section 9. And one of the things that section 2 does, so when I call Germantown, we wanna schedule a game, that AD has to assign the officials, he has to call the assider, he has to hope to get officials. Then any of the vouchers for the officials goes through the business office, and so, I mean, that's something that makes it, that makes it a whole lot easier on us, you know, to have that all centralized.
But it does not cover the cost of the officials.
Correct. The cost of the official, that is a, that is a separate item. Last year, we had just started our partnership with the NFHS Network. We took a bigger leap this year, and we went in on their no-cost deal to give us some Pixelot cameras, those are the automated cameras. If you bend in the door, bend outside on the soccer field, you see it's a, it's a white box, probably about that big, and it automatically follows the play. It comes on 15 minutes prior to the game, and then it shuts off shortly after the game. It's been really nice for us, because I don't have to stand there with the iPad and follow the games. And I'm often curious, who's watching these games? I don't know who's watching them, but people are watching them. I was amazed, I was looking this morning, there was, there were 45 people that watched one of our modified basketball games live. I'm not sure who was watching it, but there were 45 people watching one of our modified games last week live.
Let's see, grandparents.
Grandparents, yeah. So part of that deal with us seeing the free cameras, we're not getting the royalties from this. That's for the first three years of the deal, and then after that, we'll start to get some profit sharing from them. It's not much money that we would get back from the membership sold last year, didn't even think we were gonna get anything, and then I think we got a check for like $140 in April, so, you know, it's something. We did it more because it's a nice to have for our parents and our grandparents to be able to go ahead and watch the games if they're not here. That being said, we're trying to play as many games as we can where those cameras are located, so that it's available for the families.
I remember last year you said there was a possibility, like, that seniors could use those tapes, if they were...
Yes.
Did that happen?
So, we also have this, we have this program, it's not a program, it's a web-based service called Huddle, H-U-D-L-E. So anything that's recorded gets sent to Huddle. Huddle then breaks down all the, all of the tapes, and then kids can go and make their own highlight videos. That could be for colleges, that could be just to send to grandma and grandpa, or just to have for the rest of your life. And it stays with them as long as, so anything that's attached to that kid stays with them throughout the duration here at high school. So if we have, you know, a freshman that's on a varsity team, we're only breaking down varsity tapes at this point, but we do have the ability to add JV as soon as our coaches say they want it. We can do that.
And are students using that? Do we know?
Yes. Yeah, they're using it actively. And they like to watch their highlights. For next year, I would, I would suggest that we maintain our current combined teams of football and lacrosse with Pied Plains, and this year, we added field hockey. Field hockey for us, our participation number here had been going down for quite a few years, you know, when we lost modified, and then we lost JV, kinda could see that writing on the wall coming. This year, Pied Plains reached out to us and said, do you wanna send your kids here? You're setting a bus anyway, not gonna cost you anything more. And we had a few kids that had been in our program that we wanted to keep giving that opportunity. So, we sent over this year, one senior and three sophomores for field hockey, and then we had a student move into the district in middle school who had expressed an interest in playing field hockey. I reached out to Pied Plains, they said, yeah, send her. We want more kids. So they were excited about that. Now, if we could get more modified kids going, then we could potentially rebuild our own program here. So that's an avenue where we could maybe get the interest coming.
So did it end up, actually, I know we've talked about whether it was gonna cost money or not, and, you know, they could ride the football bus there, but when there were games or away games, did we, how did that end up working out? Did we have to send a bus, or...
So, we did not send any additional buses. I believe there were two or three times where we had to get our football players out a little bit early, or our field hockey players out a little bit early, because the bus was going to leave, because Pied Plains is going east, right, then we have to get them there a little bit earlier. Pied Plains was very accommodating, if we were going this way, they would stop here, pick our kids up, and go. So, it's been a great partnership. Hopefully it will work, and our lacrosse team will, will back up this spring hopefully. So, I would suggest that we maintain those, just because it's opportunity for our kids. Opportunity for our kids that we may not be able to give them if we don't have this. In addition to that, we got some lemons this winter, you could say, and we didn't have enough to field a varsity girls' basketball team. That being said, we made some lemonade because we had 24 girls sign up for modified girls' basketball. That's a number that I hadn't seen since I've been here. And I said, we need to embrace this. And I spoke with, with Tom and Joe, and we were able to make it work, and with your consent, we not only added two girls' modified teams, or one girl's modified team, so we have two, we added another boys', so now we have two of those. I would, if possible, like to keep that. Modified program is about participation, and what we're seeing is that those participation numbers are obviously higher than they've ever been during the winter. There's nothing else for kids to do in the winter. So this gives kids an opportunity to come to basketball every day, work on their skill, and kids that may have been cut before, now have a place to go, perfect the skill, and then maybe have an opportunity to move on and play JV or varsity. Not trying to project where we'd be with girls' basketball next year, I'm not sure we're going to be ready to go back to varsity at this point. That being said, if we had 12 seniors say, I wanna play basketball, then I would say we would run a varsity team. But at this point, I'm not sure we're going to be there yet. So, budget-wise, we may be able to work it like we did this year. From my angle, it would be easier if we made the decision earlier, just because I was, you know, putting together a schedule at the last minute. But I think everything's gonna work out, I think, long-term, it's gonna be really good for us, because kids are getting the skills, and it'll make all of our programs stronger at the JV and varsity level. The last item that I had there was increased Interscholastic opportunities. I know that's not easy. That being said, when I look at our participation numbers, for the most part, right, the only area where we're seeing, right, the decline is at the JV level. And that's just because kids, right, are, once they get to the high school, find all of these other things that they want to do, and maybe they don't want to play JV. That's not unique to Rhinebeck. We're seeing that all across the league, all across the section. I had, last, last spring, I had a knock at my door, I had 13 middle school boys come up to me, and they all signed a piece of paper, we want to play volleyball in Germantown. I said, that's very nice. I said, but how do you know Germantown wants you to play volleyball with them? Besides, there's 13 of you, there's only six people on a volleyball court, they're just gonna let all of you take their spots. So they've expressed an interest in volleyball. What I was able to do is speak with one of the local clubs to sponsor boys' volleyball at this point, to see if we can gauge interest. Boys' volleyball is a, is a winter sport in section 2 and in the north country, so that could be an opportunity. I've had a few questions about a ski team. I'm worried about a ski team, because when I listen to my colleagues, they're always chasing snow. Whether, you know, you're doing cross-country, you're doing downhill, if you're doing downhill when it snows, you can't ski. If there's no snow, you can't ski when you're doing cross-country, so that's a difficult one. Winter track would be something else that we could possibly start to look at. Red Hook just added it this year, I've been talking with him a lot. This has been a very good winter, he said to start winter tracks because they've been outside running on the track every day, you know. So that could be something that we could maybe look at, to increase opportunities for our student athletes in the winter. There are very many things for our kids to do in the winter. I've been asked numerous times about wrestling, if I could find somebody that would want to merge with us for wrestling, and it wouldn't drive our budget through the roof, that may be another opportunity for us. So, you know, I think that if we, if we build a table company, we've seen, we've seen swimming survive, right, thrive. It's tough with girls in the fall, because there's so many other opportunities for girls in the fall, I wish the state would switch girls' swimming for the winter. I'm kinda keeping my head against the wall, talking about that with them. Our boys' team, 12 swimmers, you know, this is, it's a great opportunity. So, I'm constantly looking, because we're here for kids. So, that's where I'm at.
You mentioned that there's interest in modified field hockey, is, I mean, is there a lot of interest? Is there a few girls? What's the interest there?
So we had one actually step up and get on the bus every day and go to Pied Plains. There were three or four others talk about it. With this being the first year of getting on the bus and going, that's something new. So, possibly, and I know that the after-school program has been running down at Chancellor, so maybe as those kids come up, if they know the opportunity is there, then that... So, as of right now, one, but maybe, maybe others.
Okay. I was just gonna ask about esports, what your opinion is about, and if there's any interest from the kids on doing them?
Esports? They just renamed it.
Did they?
Yeah, because, so, New York State Public High School is, is really pushing hard on esports, and there's a lot of discussion amongst the athletic directors sitting around the table that it's not really athletics. What are we doing? We want kids being active, but we're still getting... But we're still getting, on almost a monthly basis, this is coming, this is coming, this is coming. I haven't really heard a whole lot here whether or not we would be for it. We're not really sure what it would look like. Would we be transporting to a venue? Would it just be here, we would remote in and play? What does that look at, look like in terms of like a technology budget? Do you have to keep your machines upgraded? You know, I know like helmets, we've had to replace helmets every 10 years. I don't know what we would have to do there. It's something that's being discussed at the state level. I think it's being discussed at the state level because others believe that the New York State Public High School is the place that can actually govern it. So that's a possibility, it's out there.
Are you talking like common sports? Like sports played?
Videos.
Video games?
Video games. Not necessarily sport video games.
Just like Tetris or something?
Well, not quite like Tetris. I would say more like a.
Pawn, pawn, pawn.
I would say Call of Duty, I would say Call of the Lines of like, Call of Duty, that's like a capture the flag maybe. There was, so my understanding is, this is just my understanding, that there's a lot of money being pumped into esports. So much money that last year, the company sponsoring the Connecticut State Championships came to New York and said, "We'd like to bring a bunch of athletic directors from New York to Connecticut to watch the state championship. We'll pay for your dinner, we'll pay for your hotel, we'll pay for your bus." And the athletic directors that I know that went there said that it was, it was not very good. So I did not go firsthand. Our concern naturally is that we want kids being active. That being said, there are, this would appeal to a whole different group of kids. So I mean, there is some merit there.
Sounds more co-curricular than.
And that's what, that's what the athletic world is saying. Unfortunately, there is no governing body for co-curricular.
Yes, I can, I can understand why NISFO would be a governing body, it's there, but the connection to sports is. How about the drone racing league?
We're not allowed to have drones in any New York State Public High School athletic events.
That's true, that's true, you're right.
There is a drone policy. You cannot fly your drone unless you have written permission from the executive director and I believe Mr. Phelan as well, if he was here.
Thanks, Steve.
Steve, is indoor track both boys and girls or is it separate?
Yes, boys and girls together, indoor track.
You know, it's hard to imagine with our numbers going down that we could be adding sports. It's hard to imagine we could even maintain some of the sports we have now, especially in the fall for girls, like you said, and you know, some of our teams faltering. I don't know if it's a matter of checking different sports that kids are more interested in, which is a slippery slope, you can't continue to switch teams, but.
With the exception of the few sports that we haven't fielded a team, our participation numbers have been pretty steady despite the fact that the enrollment has dropped. So, you know, maybe we've just got more kids that are, you know, obviously percentages is going to be higher, kids are just given that opportunity to be able to do something whereas to, you know, at Arlington, you don't have that opportunity. That being said, I'd like to see more three-sport athletes here. I keep trying to convince kids, "Why wouldn't you do this?" You know, "You don't, you don't have this opportunity for the rest of your life. Get this once."
What does winter track look like? What are the, what are the events?
So the events are different. And so winter track has its issues. So the track that is the home track for Section 9 is West Point. And I, I listen a lot, but sometimes I shut them off because I don't have this yet. Their first meet, like West Point, had an issue and they like shut down and then the meet just stops. You know, so you're at the whims of West Point. And then another time, I guess one of the, one of the new individuals in charge of the gate decided, "We're going to check everybody." When you go to West Point, you have to have, you know, and you have to have everybody listed out and usually that, you can just hand that over, but no, you're checking everybody, they've delayed everybody, buses were turning around. The events are a little bit different, so they're a little bit shorter, they're not the same events that take place outdoors. Some of our, they're going either to West Point, they're going to the Armory, and there's a couple places up in Albany. There is talk at this time that Orange Ulster Boat, Orange BOCES is looking to put together a project in the Goshen area where, that would have an indoor track, which would be almost like our home indoor track for everybody to run. Nice.
So they would practice here, but then have to go at least.
We would not, we would not, we would not bus to practice on a track. We would run here as much as we could outside. And then after that, weight training and they get some gym time to, you know, keep their, their legs.
Any questions?
So before I go, I'll have to add, you know, that it's been, it's been a pleasure working with Joe. Joe has been a great supporter of the athletic program since I've been here. Incredibly active in the athletic world the last few years. Other athletic directors looked at me and said, "What are you doing having your superintendent at these meetings with you?" I said, "Let's roll." You know, I think Joe's been, Joe's been a great voice for us and for all of the schools in the area. So congratulations and enjoy.
I will. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for being here. Okay, we have the principals' reports.
So some things happening at Chancellor last time, I may have mentioned, I can't remember, that we had started a school sphere on Fridays at Chancellor, so we kind of decided early this year, we were hoping to do that every Friday, so I remind students as we go. And we were lucky enough, a staff member, we worked with the PT SO, they had put out some Ryback specific stuff, we were about to make stuff people were able to order, as well as, I just wanted to thank Tania Morrissey, one of our teachers, who worked with another provider and was able to find Chancellor-specific stuff. So I myself, I'm like, "What are you sure?" And she goes, "Sure." And it all says like CLS with a "Haw" on it, it's a district, so, which is really nice and they just came in. So last Friday was the first time we saw just like all of it, it was pretty awesome. So I just wanted to thank her for making that extra step in doing that. I may have mentioned it last time, it's gotten a little bit bigger and I wanted to just make sure I gave you an update. You know, one of the things, we're always looking for, you know, working to kind of support students' social emotional health, especially in the elementary school. And so one of the things we've been doing is we're trying to pilot some sensory pathways at Chancellor. So you may remember I had mentioned, we were able through Kevin Uernell, at one of his, his New York State PE conferences that he went to, he had run into a person who kind of ran a company, who brought these pathways together, so we were able to get some free samples, enough to actually create one full pathway for our kindergarten hallway. So we're going to start there, I actually have a meeting with some of the teachers on Friday to figure out what it would look like and some of the stations that we can do. And I think some of the youngest students, we're still, the youngest students in the building, are the most of that sensory support, because they're five, that sensory support. But the idea will be, we hope to expand it to possibly the other side of the building, we have a STEM lab, for students that have, create one that's more appropriate for the students upstairs. So we have them forward with that. We've kind of brought, we were lucky enough to bring Emily Davidson in, so she has some funding to help with that too, so we're, we're really hoping to kind of build on that. We'll start with one, and this week I have a meeting with some kindergarten teachers to figure out what that might look like. And with the pathways, it's, it's more like something you can kind of follow on the, on the ground and then there's stations where you might do yoga poses and things like that and just get the kids active. It's interesting because we find ourselves doing that all the time with students anyway. You know, I might, I might come to respond to a student who needs a bit of break and we might go and do, and then do that, see if there's lines on the floor for a thousand other reasons that we utilize these kind of techniques. So this is a much more aesthetically pleasing, chock-filling way of doing it. So stay tuned, we'll get some updates on that. I wanted to mention, last week we had a CLS STEM Night Out sponsored by the Ryback Science Foundation and I wanted to thank them, they always work hard to kind of partner with Bard students who come and work with our students. They all came together to once again make that night happen. They focused on things like earth slime, making a bird feeder and owl pellets, which I know in my house is one of my kids' favorites things. We order those every once in a while, we love to. So it was very well received. Got some wonderful feedback from families and of course I always tell them, I had the easy part, I just really had to say yes to the, to the Ryback Science Foundation and move forward. But I've got a lot of great feedback, so just really enjoy that evening. Also wanted to let you know, I'm working with Lisa Heller from IBM to start to organize Engineers Week as we've done many, many years in the past. She's taking over for Rick Rizolo, who had retired for years, he had really run and worked with us. So we'll be talking a great little chat this Friday about kind of reaching out and kind of organizing that time. She's got a good date, we've got a couple of months, so it might not actually be a week and we can expand out depending on when the engineers can make it or if we're going to get as many grades as possible to participate. And for those of you who may not know, they get an opportunity to really work with engineers in the field and talk about what engineers do and problems they solve and kind of try to create grade specific based on the grades I would work on. So I'll have more updates for you next time, just to have us, that's panning out. Something I'm very excited about, I don't think I teased it last time, I may have mentioned that we were trying to plan some things. With the onset of our units of study, the Lucy Coughlin units, writing units of study, we started this year with kindergarten first grade, so I specifically work with kindergarten, this Locks, my AP works with first grade, and we've tried to kind of, you know, do all that out and we try to pull our resources together. Martin Krebs has been very helpful with working with BOCES to get a model schools person to come and work. So in addition to them taking on this, this kind of philosophy of how to teach writing, we're lucky enough to have these people kind of work in very close proximity of each of them walking through their very grade specific units. And it's a much more broad way of thinking about teaching writing, so the idea is, it's almost like quarterly units, so you can spend a lot more time exploring the type of writing and visiting seed ideas and then putting off those, those off to the side and developing others and things like that. So anyway, the, one of the things I'm very excited about is for years I've really, you know, hoped we can start to cultivate kind of visitations, not only within my building, but possibly visiting other districts. So we've been pooling our resources with Slacks, myself and Audrey from Model Schools and BOCES. And we've touched base with an assistant principal and principal in Arlington, so we're going to go visit. I'm going to join kindergarten in the morning and then the afternoon, we're going to turn to first grade and we're going to get to see kindergarten and first grade classes instituting these units and having a conversation with each of the teachers and be briefing with them while we're there. So this is really stepping in a very interesting direction. I'm excited that people are really interested in doing it. It is difficult, I should hope, for teachers to come out of their classrooms and see something that I have to commend Kane, want to really see value in and have allowed us to really plan that. So we're doing that on Thursday. Wanted to just mention, our PE council, as you've heard me mention, is a great group, a small group of fifth grade students. I think Kevin Uernell has really cultivated that program to be something that, that he kind of partners with Larry Anthony and Food Service and they, they have a lot of conversations about just initiatives in the building and everything from nutrition to, to this where a core group of them came up with an idea and they kind of cultivated it, wanting to kind of help out of the local SPCA with like blankets and donations and stuff like that. And that kind of turned into them not only wanting to say, "Hey, Mr. King, can we put a box in the lobby?" And some of those things, they're very often work very well. They wanted to take it a step further, so they're kind of planning all on their own just with the guidance of Mr. Uernell, certainly my permission, which I would love to say yes to these things. They're going to be creating bulletin boards and design the bulletin board in the way that it'll, it'll include them with pictures of their pets and kind of get people interested when we want a bulletin board found by our parents to pick up. So we thought it was just such a great idea for this seed idea, for them to really cultivate it and plan it and just kind of be that guide on the side. So they're going to be doing that. And one of the great things is I want to let you know, we have a great partnership with Northern Kentucky News and they're going to be coming during PE Council tomorrow morning to kind of interview the students, discuss it and talk to me about the experience and things. So we're just happy to kind of put some of that info out there. It's a great program, albeit a small group of students, but a really fast-paced bulletin board. Moving forward, wanted to let you know, CLS Music Department is hosting Drumming, Rhythm and Storytelling Workshop next Thursday on the 4th. Joakim Lartie is his name, he's actually come to our district before. Will be working with third graders in the community room in three sessions. He's a drummer, percussionist, storyteller and sound designer and is engaged in a lifelong exploration of the fusion of traditional and ancient contemporary music forms. So he'll be working with each grade, each class in the grade individually rather than the whole group, so he'll have three sessions with him. And I put it on my schedule, I'm trying to be there and may see one of them if I can. Also wanted to mention, you may have seen them on the video this morning, the whole Miss Simmons class. Those of you who may have been around the table for a couple of years may remember CLS Press, we've had a couple of false starts, I've even recorded here, "Hey, you know, we're ready to roll." And, you know, sometimes those things don't work out, it does put, it does take a lot of effort and extra work and students have to really be interested. You know, the first three girls that did it like about four years ago really set quite a, quite a bar. They were amazing at it and we've had a couple of students try to pick it up and move forward. So this year, I met with two girls, Una and Rose, they were on the video like I mentioned, actually right in a row, which was, which was interesting. They came and presented to me, had a meeting with me a couple weeks back, I gave them a few next steps. They reached out to me, one of the great things about the kind of email correspondence at fifth grade, they, students can email me directly, which is great. "Hey, we want to set up a meeting with you, here's all the things we discussed." They showed up literally on Monday with a, or Tuesday, with a, with like a completed version. They had gone over a whole bunch of possible options for articles, they hit every mark, they even created it on their own and they even renamed it, because I told them, you don't have to say, I always thought CLS Press was a great name, but they're going to call it the CLS Chronicle and they had it all laid out. So by the way, that's a step in an interesting direction because if you remember, myself and Rachel, my, my secretary, we would actually take the articles and just format it for them, they used to send it directly to me, which was fine. We loved being a part of it, but these girls have taken it upon themselves to be like, "Here's our version." So I'm their editor and they'll get, they'll get an edited version tomorrow and they'll have a due date, so we're hoping, like February, next week is going to be the first issue, so I will review copies of that as we go on. This is no false start, these young women are very, very motivated and have really hit it out of the park. So our next step is also for them to, I sent them off with a task of thinking about how they want other students in the building to be able to present articles for the newspaper. So they're working on that and it worked out beautifully in the past, so I'm going to leave it up to them to run with that. Some additional upcoming events, I think it's appropriate in the fact that we're really identifying and acknowledging tonight people who spend a lot of time donating and helping out our district. So I want to just mention that a Chinese New Year celebration on January 31st hosted by Culture Connect at Chancellor. We have trivia night at CLS on February 7th hosted by our PT SO. And the great thing, there's a lot of buzz in my building now, students getting to submit their questions for that evening, so we've been collecting those and they're new this week. We have some of a winter carnival at CLS on February 8th sponsored by the RHS Classes of 2020 and 2021 and I just wanted to thank him and Colton. It's so funny, I remember him as a student in my building and now I see him everywhere just advocating for such amazing things I've seen him present to you guys. So he met with me, sat down and we planned that, so that's coming soon. And just wanted to remind you at the next board meeting, that will be the 25th, the second one in February, we will have members of the CLS specialist team talking about their current units.
Any questions for Mr. Kane?
I have a question. Is Miss Simmons the only class that has flexible seating?
I, I think to that level, yes. I mean, people have kind of picked up and tried to offer different environments. I think she's the one who's full-tilt, 100% invested. We've had her present to the staff, it was this year or the end of last year, faculty meeting about like how she's, how she's not only funded it but how she organizes it. So a few people have picked up, I've even found, found budgeting for some of the ball chairs and things that I have in my office that every once in a while, like we have CST meetings, child study team, and we see that that's something that maybe a student in a tier one type, you know, intervention, I'm able to actually give it to them and use it right there. So it's interesting you ask that because it, one of the shifts, I mean, she is the only one, like I said, 100% invested in that being her environment. But for years, we've really started to take, I think, a lot of the wobbly chairs and the things historically we've bought through, let's say, the special end budget to support those students who have needs. If you walk into Chancellor, it's rarely you can find a class that doesn't have a few different versions of seating that can be available. Many of them will, you know, a student who's the wobble, the wobble seat for a week and then trade off and, you know, it's kind of something to get to learn and things. But we see it in every classroom, but to that level, she's really, you know, head and shoulders above on that.
Yeah, that was great. Thank you.
And you can see that in the amount of funding sources she has.
Yeah. That's great. Yeah. That's great. I look forward to the paper, the first issue.
Yeah, I'll get it to you. It's coming.
Thank you.
Those of you that were in our meetings earlier, I kind of mentioned this, but the most exciting thing that's happened in my world over the course of the last month since I last reported out to you is hiring a new technology teacher. So just yesterday morning, we welcomed Eric Breen to our staff. As you're well aware, it was a very long process in trying to, trying to find and hire the right individual. We value our technology program highly and we're very excited, excited to see him join our staff. I need to reach out and thank all of you who made yourselves available on a, on a Monday morning, two days before Christmas, so that we could get him on board and join us much earlier than he would have had we had to wait for that first board meeting in November. I wanted to update you on two service learning projects that were sponsored by our clubs. I mentioned them in my board report in December. However, some final reminders for you. First, our student council funded or sponsored their annual food drive. This year, we netted 600, just over 600 items that we were able to donate to the local food pantry at Good Shepherd. And that included a snow day, I think, that was in that week that we were collecting. And second, this year, we held our 10th annual at this point, Knit for the NICU campaign. Years ago, we started out knitting blankets for homeless shelters. We changed that up and we started knitting for the Vassar NICU. We've been doing that, I think, since 2015 now. And prior to this year, our record for donations on Christmas Eve was 108 blankets. And this year, we donated 223 blankets on Christmas Eve. Certainly, there was, there was some help outside of our organization with some, some parents and some community members and staff people who were very much involved. But as I know, I've shared out with all of you and I know at least one of you has participated in the past, this has always been a program that has really spanned generations. We have high school students that come back and participate. We have college students that bring things back with them that they've been working on kind of throughout the fall semester, knowing that Mrs. Family will be going to the Vassar NICU to donate on Christmas Eve. Thanks to the support of the Rhinebeck Science Foundation, our eighth grade students traveled to Bard College. That took place just a couple of weeks ago and participated in the Day of Science. Again, this is a program that we've been doing, we've had the good fortune to be a participant in over the course of many years at this point, working with Bard students and professors. Students participated in a number of hands-on activities around the central theme of water conservation. The theme of water conservation has been part of the program for the last couple of years. This year, all of their activities really kind of took that. We've talked in past years and worked around the idea of our local watershed. This year, there was much more global awareness that was incorporated into their program. The students learned about the effects of road salt on the lakes and streams. They learned about the, the effective drought on the water cycle. And, and they worked around contaminant spill simulation while learning about pollution. Also earlier this month, our seventh grade science classes welcomed Dr. Brooke Jude, Associate Professor of Biology at Bard College. You'll see tonight, Bard really has a science theme, a lot of collaboration with Bard College, who with the assistance of Mrs. Danaman, came in and worked with our seventh grade students using fold scopes. There are low-cost portable microscope that students are able to really take and work at, work without the field. Rhinebeck Science Foundation was nice enough to donate 40 of these folds, fold scopes, to us at the end of the Discovery Festival this past fall. The lessons that Mrs. Danaman and Dr. Jude did were so successful, Mrs. Danaman was so excited about it that he went out and purchased more so that we can use them as we go into the spring and start to go outside and do some of our own experimentation. In computer science two classes, our seventh grade students are just wrapping up an interdisciplinary project that our computer science teachers have been doing with Mrs. Barnes. Math classes, students are learning about a variety of, and using a variety of software applications and presentation software applications. They are creating presentations on different math concepts that are coming up in the curriculum over the course of the next couple of months. And they're then going to have the opportunity for extra credit. They've already presented to their computer science classes, but they're actually going to have the opportunity over the course of the next several weeks to teach their peers during their, their seventh grade math classes. Last week, BMS students participated in the Duchess County Music Educators Association, BCMAA, Junior High Old County Festival. These students qualified for the Old County Festival based on their NISM Solo scores from last spring in terms of band and orchestra and through a recorded audition for chorus. Hard to believe, but Friday marks the, the middle of the school year and the end of our first semester. An update on a couple of, also services benchmarks for a couple of our initiatives. First, through our Home and Careers classes, our technology class and Home Economics class, Isabel Yousiewitz and Carmela Fountain have introduced at this point to half of the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade student body, Naviance. So you're well aware of what Naviance is at this point, but our students have set up accounts. They've taken a lot of self-interest surveys. They've done some individual goal setting with Mrs. Fountain. They've explored Road Trip Nation. Our eighth grade students have used the platform to complete a career explorations project. Really, we're just getting them kind of up and rolling with it. Obviously, they're going to use it and expand that use as they move across the middle school grade levels, but certainly as they move up into high school. So all the feedback that we've received from students and from the, from the adults working with the program is extremely positive. We look forward to introducing the other half of the sixth, seventh, and eighth grades to the program during the second semester. Second, and I know I've spoken about Alice Coleman and the Phil's Living Project that she's doing with our sixth grade students. As you know, she's, she's been wonderful. She's donated a lot of time to our, to our students. The end of the first semester marks the completion of her second series of lessons on the topic, resulting in half of all sixth grade students at this point having gone through the, her program. This homeless lessons focus on decreasing anxiety and learning practical strategies and tools for taking risks and kind of overcoming fear. It's one of our initiatives, particularly at the sixth grade level, to, to try and deal with anxiety within our students and work on social emotional learning. You'll recall that at the end, at the beginning of this semester, beginning of this quarter actually, we added a free and post survey tool for, for students. I look forward next week to, to see the results of that. We also bought, we also did some parent outreach at the beginning of this quarter as well with our new group of sixth grade students that were taking part in the program. So I look forward to trying to get some feedback from our parent population as well. Also along the lines of social emotional learning, you'll recall then in the fall, our students or our faculty worked with Dr. Lynn Lyons. That partnership has continued. And just yesterday, our PPS staff, some of our administrative staff and Emily Davidson participated in a video conference with Lynn for about two hours. She's really, she's reached out to us and she's asked us and our support staff to bring some of our most challenging cases to her. And they've really worked through some of those students and we've implemented a lot of her techniques through CSD meetings, through individual counseling sessions with our PPS staff and our, and our most challenging students. So that's been a good partnership. I believe we have two more video conferences set up with her to kind of continue our work with her throughout the school year. Couple of upcoming events next weekend, and you'll hear a little bit more about this from Dr. Davenport. But thanks to the support of Dr. Davenport and Amy Christie, two BMS students will take part in the Youth Empowerment and Sustainability Summit that's going to take place, I believe, next Thursday or next Friday, Saturday, Sunday, over at the Choken Outdoor Education Center. They'll be part of a Rhinebeck School District Team that's being sent. The three-day event is designed to empower students by teaching them to develop solutions-based thinking and civic engagement skills around the subject of climate resilience. February 14th, all of our, all of the faculty in the district will be participating in the superintendent's conference day. Our theme has been, at this time in the school year, for the last several years, will be technology. Once again, we'll have some outside consultants that will be coming in and working with our, our faculty and staff, as well as some of our own internal experts that are going to be sharing their expertise with their colleagues. February 22nd, BMS students will be participating in the Eighth Grade Science Fair. I believe it's in its fifth year. It's a joint venture with Linden Avenue Middle School up in Red Hook. It will take place at Bard College. Students will present their original research projects from hypothesis to data collection and analysis of findings to a panel of judges. The winner of our regional science fair here Rhinebeck in Red Hook will be invited to participate in the 61st Annual Duchess County Science Fair that's held at Duchess Community College. And just this morning, Kristin Kobel shared with me that in addition to that, the winner of the, the science fair, again, this is in the, the planning forums at, at the planning stage at this point, Dr. Chris Lefrada, who is the Associate Professor in Chemistry up at Bard, is working on a research opportunity, working alongside either him or one of his Bard colleagues, doing some college-level research for the winner of this local science fair. And finally, plans are underway for Career Day. Career Day will be held on March 20th this year. Again, every public opportunity that I have to reach out to, to individuals, I will say, that over the course of the last couple of years, it's been very difficult to develop a presenter pool. This is not a program that can take place without, you know, community support and parent support. So anyone you know that's willing to give up that morning for the benefit of our students, please pass along that we're starting. Thank you.
Questions, Mr. Kane? Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Good evening. As usual, I'd like to begin with some academic updates. And I'd like to begin with some updates from our English department. Our third annual HAWK Talks took place last Friday. As you recall, the HAWK Talks are based on a passion project that our 12th graders in English 12 complete. The passion project is a research paper. Students work on an area that they're passionate about. They take that paper and turn it into a presentation, like a TED Talk, present that to their classmates. And then the four, as determined by the teachers, the four most successful HAWK Talks are then presented by these four students to all of their peers or guests at the HAWK Awards on Friday. So another successful iteration of this practice. Also happy to inform you that Rhinebeck Reality, our high school newspaper, is now an award-winning newspaper. Two of the articles published in the newspaper have won what's called the Best of Snow, S-N-O, Student News Organization Award. About 1,700 of the 11,000 submissions this year for this award have been selected. The Snow Awards are selected by the publishers and moderators of our hosted website, which is a snow, called the Snow Site. And it really indicates the excellent work that our student writers are accomplishing. I'm not going to tell you what articles are there. You'll have to look in the newspaper. All right, I'll tell you what. It's right here, Best of Snow. So if you haven't taken a look at the newspaper yet, we've got copies over there. The second article we learned about last week is on our website, rhinebeckreality.org. Again, it's just excellent work from our student writers. On a related note, I'm happy to share with you, just a few hours ago, I received this information, an accolade for our literary magazine. So if I may read some of the text of this letter. It reads, Dear Ms. Wheeler, Ms. Wheeler's the moderator of our creative writing club, it's my pleasure to inform you that your school's literary magazine, Murmur, has been selected to receive the rank of excellent in the 2019 National Council Teachers of English recognizing excellence in art and literary magazines realm acronym program. From all of us at the NCTE, congratulations to you and your students on this exceptional publication. We commend you for inspiring the love of writing that your students will remember for the rest of their lives. The mission of NCTE's Realm Program is to publicize, publicly recognize excellent literary magazines produced by students with the support of their teachers. So another accolade for the excellent work of our, of our student writers. In our art department, last Thursday, our studio art classes displayed the culminating work of a five-day art challenge mural. Students were organized into groups, given some design constraints, and each of the groups produced a mural. And you can see the examples of their work opposite of our touring. And their work is judged by a panel of guest judges, including some of our faculty members. I won't read the winners. I don't want to embarrass anyone, but you can certainly read about those across from the touring. Other art news, two of our students, our seniors, were chosen to participate in the annual Columbia Green Community College Foundation Gallery Jury Art Show. And one of our students was selected to win a prize. Fifteen different local high schools participated on this really outstanding work that our students produce in a highly competitive jury show. In our music department, on December 16th, our chorus and band performed for joint spectatorship of both BMS and RHS students for a very successful concert. In our guidance department, we have, our counselors have begun their scheduling meetings for next year's schedule. And in college degrees two, our juniors with the assistance of Mr. Hall, so Mr. Hayward, are learning how they'll be able to use Naviance for their college applications. So we're continuing to roll out our Naviance in high school, using it to facilitate college applications. Our creative writing club, Drama Club, in early December presented an evening of literary entertainment for the third annual Black Box Theater. This featured monologues of poetry, Brent writer students, as well as our contestants from the Poetry Out Loud competition. In some other extracurricular news, you remember I mentioned that the Model UN sponsored a visit by Kelly Mikecroft, who is a disabilities activist. The Model UN is going to follow up over the next several weeks with a live Instagram, I don't know what you call it, chat with Ms. Mikecroft, she's currently at home in South Africa, for any interested students. I'm interested in learning more about how this works. I'll be depending upon our students, of course, and Mr. Jensen. Our student council, as you recall in my last report, have been working on developing a survey to administer to their peers to measure the, the academic stressors that they're working under and their engagement at school. Conversing with the student council, with our department chairs and with other faculty, the student council has discovered and recommended to us a survey on this topic that's been written by the Graduate School of Education at Stanford University, has a survey sample currently of about 40,000 students. So the student council is making a recommendation to the faculty that need to administer this survey. At some point in the near future, if we clear all the hurdles, in order to determine levels of student engagement in our high school and what the stressors are that our students work under. Ideally, we'll be able to use this data to make systemic changes and practical changes that will support our students in their studies and reduce anxiety and other negative emotions that they, they're experiencing. I'll echo a little bit something that Mr. Kevin's mentioned with the support of RSF. I'll say with the generous support of RSF, next week, we're able to send a team of students to the Youth Empowerment and Sustainability Summit. Kids play from February 6 through 8. This is a Global Climate Solution and Leadership Summit for young people. The three-day event is designed to empower students from middle school through high school by teaching them to develop solutions-based thinking and civic engagement skills. And as I've been chatting with the developer of this conference, really the thought is that these students will be able to come back to their home districts. About 50 different students that will be participating and really help to initiate change in their own homes. This conference, a side note, will be attended by four students from the United Kingdom. They attend the Thorpe St. Andrews School in Norwich. Our community has generously offered to host these visitors and these students will be spending some time with our students Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. So there'll be some exchange and some sharing of best practices next week before the students leave for the yes conference. Some updates from high school.
Any questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. We're going to move on to board committee reports, curriculum.
So curriculum, we actually decided at the Ford, and we didn't deserve to read it, to discuss Earth Science, to be operating in the curriculum. Dr. Davenport was able to attend, Mr. Kevinsor was not. We went over, you know, currently what was going on, how the students are allowed to opt in and out. There are two different ways of opting out. One will give them credit, one will not. And then we tried to figure out, you know, what is the likelihood that we should try to implement something like this, should we do an entire eighth grade or possibly just as an accelerated type of class, where only certain students would take it. It was commented that the current program is very strong, the sixth, eighth grade program is very strong, the teachers like it, they're wanting very hard to win it, and they are making changes because the next level, the new New York standards are coming out and they're changing. So some of the information that we have may not be 100% correct. We did get some feedback, but this is hopeful that some of our information was incorrect. Mr. Kevinsor is going to be invited to our next meeting. And then we sort of discussed how, given our long-range planning, maybe this is a good time to think about a change to the curriculum since we potentially make one school, either middle school and high school. So that wasn't really discussed very much. It was sort of just reiterated that the teachers have very strong bonds, and they're just really right now are working towards doing anything that will benefit students and students that are strong. And then Dr. Davenport discussed the instituting of pass/fail grading system for actives. He thought this would increase enrollment in some of the elective classes without impacting the students' GPA, giving the kids an opportunity to do something that is fun and alleviate anxiety issues at school. And then for topics that we want to continue, we want to talk about the Ford and the College and Careers courses that were offered in the middle school, and also invite Mr. Kevinsor back to address the issues.
Any questions for curriculum?
I would say that this is probably the hardest minutes I've read in the 10 years I've been reading them. It just seems to me that in a small district where kids are not looked at upon as getting what they would like to see and achieve in school is disappointing to me. The answer, no, I can't do that. I don't think we can do that. This is the way we're doing things. It is not acceptable when we're looking at giving kids a good education. I think the way that these opt-out programs are very loose, you know, parents don't find out about them in time and they miss out, you know, something needs to be done here. This isn't the first time that this has come up. And it's just really disappointing that nothing's changing. You know, other districts around here do it. I know Red High Park does it. What do they do in there? Maybe you need to get some examples. I'm glad College and Careers is back on here. That was something that the CAC meeting came up that needed to be addressed. A year has passed, we haven't done anything there either. So I'm glad that curriculum is starting to look at that.
I would just add, you know, this science opt-out, you know, it comes up every couple of years. And I feel like I've heard kind of different reasons each time as to why it's not allowed. Are you going to talk to Mr. Kevinsor and get more information? I just hope maybe we could get to the bottom of the why of this, you know, if there, you know, there might be an actual real legitimate reason, and that's fine.
Off the why and students opt out?
But no, the why that we don't, I know why students want to opt out. The why as to why we either don't allow it or it can't happen. I mean, there's been a couple-
We do allow opt-out. We've been doing it for years.
Isn't this tied together with students wanting to not take the eighth grade but move on and take the ninth grade living environment instead? Isn't that all tied in with this, right? We don't allow that.
No, we don't allow that. We allow kids to opt out of Earth Science in the high school. That's correct.
But as far as just being able to skip into the other one, accelerate to the other one, the board. Yeah, just like I've heard scheduling and different reasons, and just maybe if we had one, you know, a final word on that, it might be easier to communicate that when that comes up with parents or allow it or whatever is going to happen with it.
We talked about that and the need for a narrative that makes sense to the why.
Yeah, right.
It's difficult to explain. I think there's some complicated historical reasons why it is the way it is, but I think we need to have a clear message on it.
So I would think, you know, you guys are going to dive into it again with Mr. Kevinsor.
Correct.
Maybe that will be the, be able to get a final answer on that. As far as the pass/fail, you know, we haven't talked about that. I wonder if maybe that's something that could be done as a trial even for next year in one of, you know, in one of the departments or something, you know. I know it might be a harder thing to roll out all across, but maybe in a small dose in somewhere, the art department, somewhere where it might work more easily, like that we could try that even for this coming school year.
Well, that's what they're planning, yeah.
Dr. Davenport is talking with all the department heads, and they're talking about it. Actually, as you mentioned, Ford is the one that's most problematic for some reason. I'm not really sure what, he didn't dive into the reason why it was, but having the local systems with them making it pass fail. We were very excited when we heard about it, you know, we gave them, you know, a great opportunity to take classes they might not necessarily take, give them a little stress relief.
It came up in the CSA, we talked about long-range planning maybe a year ago, just, you know, just things that we heard the kids wouldn't take some classes potentially because they don't want to affect their GPAs. But this is an opportunity for that. It's an opportunity for kids in study hall that might say, you know, I'm, you know, I'd rather do something else or try something, or, you know, it's a great opportunity. I'm sure there's going to be a lot of, you know, working through the details of what it's going to look like and all of that. But, you know, even if just we could offer them one class in one way, but the guidance counselors are working on schedules probably soon. They're getting started with that, so that's why I thought maybe it wouldn't happen.
Actually, I think they've flushed out some guidelines.
What you could opt to do, I think it's like an option.
Well, you-
It leaves you up to decide.
Yeah.
Do you take the core? I think what they're looking at is, and again, nothing's been finalized, but I think they've, from an email I got from Dr. Davenport today, it seems like it's pretty, pretty well flushed out. For example, they were looking at having a student make a decision by the end of the first interim marking period as to whether they want to take it for a grade or take it for pass, for pass/fail. So I feel fairly confident that we'll be able to offer that on some level, maybe as a trial basis to see how it goes, to see how it impacts enrollment in those courses, you know, on what basis, how many kids opt for a pass/fail. So I think that's pretty much right around the corner.
Okay. Great. Any other questions for curriculum? Okay. Long-range planning.
So mine, so we discussed the listening sessions that we had with the staff a couple weeks ago, January 9th, I guess. Attendance was really good at CLS and BMS. The attendance from the high school was not as robust. A lot of the discussion covered the school structures, teachers teaching in multiple buildings and how that impacted their class structure, class size, things like that. We also received emails from teachers and staff that weren't able to attend, so Joe's working on a reply to those. We also discussed the RTA's long-range planning committee that they've come formed, I guess. Just want to make sure that they've realized it's a three to five vision a year for the district with respect to declining enrollment and financial constraints. Both of those need to be addressed in whatever they're working on. Then we talked about Mr. Davenport created a model schedule for what the high school would look like when the smaller class sizes went up there. It looked like that the core classes were, schedule-wise, worked pretty well, but the electives, the numbers of kids placed dropped off pretty dramatically. We got a lot of questions on impact of the teachers teaching in the high school and the impact on the teachers in the middle school. So we invited them to come back. They're going to come back February 5th, and all three principals will be there for that meeting. And then we also discussed the option of pass/fail.
Questions for long-range planning? Okay. Personnel. Those are mine. Personnel, we discussed the contract details for the managerial confidential. We have the information in your packet. And we discussed the upcoming negotiations with the RTA bargaining unit. Joe's going to set up the first meeting to discuss the process between the two teams for March, and we'll set up a conference call with our attorney to go through the contract. Any questions for personnel? Might be better to, if I can session, have you had any, but nothing. Oh, and finance.
Okay, so just hitting the high points here. Christine provided an update in the cafeteria financials, which once again showed a profit. Tom went on to discuss the Cold War Veterans Exemption, which had been discussed at numerous prior meetings, as well as a separate exemption, the Disabled Veterans Exemption, which would be in addition to Cold War Veterans Exemption. After discussion, the committee decided to recommend both exemptions, the Cold War Veterans Exemption and the Disabled Veterans Exemption at an upcoming meeting. Tom went on to provide an update on the Every Student Succeeds Act, ESSA. Tom then discussed the projected fund balance and discussed the fact that the surplus was driven by the significant level of unappropriated fund balance and potential options to reduce that balance going forward. Tom then discussed the 2021 rollover budget, including the various categories with variances, and concluded by discussing a potential change to the budget meeting calendar.
Questions for finance? I do? Well, maybe not so much a question. I just, you can't point out enough the great job the cafeteria is doing. I think only Joe, Tom, and Mark know how much, how happy that makes me. Because for most of the years when I was first on the board, that was my-
I think it was the second year in a row with a profit.
Yeah.
Well, we still have the rest of the year.
Right, but so far.
Very promising. But-
It's often another good start.
For many years, that was a sticking point with me, so it's very, it's hard, it took a lot of hard work. It's great to see that. I just wanted to say with the Cold War Veterans Exemption, I think, you know, before that comes to a vote or we're going to come up here, I just want to make sure that we allow the public time to weigh in on that if they, you know, if they understand that. Different than anything else that we budgetary, I mean, this is something that affects everybody directly when they, you know, if we give this exemption, that money is basically passed on to everyone else. So we have approved other ones in the past. I just, if somebody wanted to weigh in or come and have their opinion on that, I just think they just have the opportunity to do that, that's all. I don't, you know-
It's a good point. And speaking with Margot and then looking back at when we did adopt the alternative veterans exemptions about, I think it was about five years ago or so, it was 2015, yeah, so five years ago. There has to be a public hearing before you adopt it. So we would have to have a public hearing to let, to inform the community of the, what it is and the impact. The question comes in whether you want to do that at the beginning of the meeting and then adopt it later on, or give it one meeting, allow two weeks for comments, and then come back the following week. I mean, that's a decision you guys will have to make. And did you find out about the timeline for adopting that? No, I have not found out. Matt appears to be on vacation this week, so we'll reach out again.
My two cents, I would just say split it up because sometimes it takes the public a little bit to catch on to what's going on, and so if you do it all in one night, they may not-
So for example, so for example, just to make sure I'm understanding that, as an example, so do the hearing on February 14th and vote it on February 26th or whatever the next week. That's what you're talking about.
Yeah, I mean, that's just my opinion, though.
If it works with the dates from Matt, I mean, I don't know what the deadline is.
Well, that's, we're going to find that out.
Yeah, right, if it doesn't work.
I think one of the differences before, we had many meetings about the alternative veterans exemption coming up to it, where this hasn't had the same impact, so there hasn't been a lot of discussion about it, so.
Yeah, the impact's a lot smaller as well.
Oh, yeah, the impact is 10% of what the alternative veterans exemption was.
Yeah. Okay.
Does anybody object to that kind of a phased hearing discussion and then action two weeks later?
It makes sense.
I just want to make sure everybody's on board with that, and we'll, we'll make sure, however we schedule, that it's within the deadline for adopting it as soon as you find that out from-
Vermont.
From the development of the town, rather. Okay.
Okay. Any other questions for finance? All right. Facilities?
That's me. So highlights, we went over a lot of details from the Capital Project updates, which are in the minutes for review. But over spring break, over spring recess, most of the punch list items should be completed with whatever contract work from Phase 1 is left over. And other important thing to note is that the CLS lockers will be painted over spring break, spring recess, so teachers will not be able to be on the second floor over that break. And then we talked about summer work, and again, an important thing to call out that the replacement of window walls at CLS is going to be happening. So thankfully, we don't have to clear out the rooms completely, but teachers will not be able to be on the second floor all summer, and parents will not be able to come in to visit classrooms during the summer, because of the convention there. Also, parts or all of Rhinebeck High School will be likely closed at times in the summer when the asbestos abatement work is happening for obvious reasons of not wanting people to be about, around the asbestos abatement work. And the rest kind of is just details of capital work updates. And we did also discuss the possibility of having updates to the Capital Project included as a coffee with the board topic, and that maybe it's not the best format for that because it's more of a presentation than a discussion with questions. So instead, we're going to have somebody from the Plumbo Group come to present mid-project update to the board here, and that maybe we should pick a different coffee with the board.
I've already scheduled that for the February 25th meeting, so that's going to happen.
Questions for facilities? Okay. So the annual Duchess County BOSI's Board nominations, elections, and administrative budget.
Okay, so keep this one quick. As they do every year, and as most of you are aware, there are, BOSI's has Board of Education seats as well as the component districts. There are three open seats that will be voted on April 28th by each component Board of Education. The people, people from districts that currently have somebody on the BOSI's Board cannot run. That would be Arlenkirk's back and Kill Wappinger's. And Weebetuck, since Rhinebeck doesn't have anybody on the BOSI's Board, a candidate from Rhinebeck could request to be nominated. The person does not have to be a Rhinebeck Board of Education member. Can be a member of the community who has an interest or might have an interest in serving on the BOSI's Board, running for the BOSI's Board. So if you know of anybody who might be interested, let them know. You can send them my way, and I can get them more information if they're interested. But ought to be somebody who has an interest in the kind of services BOSI's provides, like occupational education, special education, those specialized programs that they, that they offer. We'll also, on the 28th, be voting on the BOSI's administrative budget as we're required to every year. Between now and then, we'll be getting more information from the BOSI's administrative staff as to what that's going to involve. staff as to what that's going to involve and how much of an increase that, that will be. And we'll obviously have to factor that in when we're building our own, our own school district budget. So, that's about all on that one. Any questions there? Okay?
Okay. What's next? Oh, superintendent search update. So, the ads are all over the place. We've got, applications have come in. The consultant groups are currently screening applicants. At last I knew, we had 30 applicants. It's the last number I was given, and that was a couple of days ago, so it could be up beyond there. For the day in the district, so this is the opportunity for our stakeholder groups to meet with the finalists. The schedule is just about complete. There's going to be two opportunities for community or parents that want to participate in this. One, there'll be a morning session, and then there'll be an evening session. It's, the dates are March 2nd, 3rd, and 4th. Those members of the community that are interested in participating in this, they will need to be available all three days. We may only need two days in the end, but they have to be available all three days. The sessions are going to be 45 minutes long. You only have to attend one, the morning, or the afternoon, or the evening, not, not both. And at the EU, have the opportunity to meet with the candidate, ask questions, and then there'll be a feedback form at the end that she'll be required to fill out, that we'll come back to the board, for the board to gather and review all that information. So, parents that are interested, there is going to be information going out, but if anyone is interested in participating in that, basically, they're going to email me they're interested and available for all three dates. But that information will be going out hopefully by the end of this week. But, so the schedule's going out, it will, it will get out to everybody as soon as it's complete, we're just making the last little tweaks on it. That's everything on the search update. Now, we can move on to good news. We had a lot of good news from our principals. I don't think I have anything else. Joe?
I know.
Okay. Old business?
I have a couple of items, and these things are in your, at your places under FYI. We are meeting, we being Mark, Diane, Liz, and Jaclyn, with Senator Serino this Thursday, January 30th, from 11:00 to 11:30. So, we need to be down there by 11:00, of course. And Tom and I, mostly Tom, have put together the document in your packets with the heading "Potential Items for Discussion with Legislators." So, obviously, we need to go into, meet with Senator Serino with something to tell her. So, there are three pages there for you to, especially those who are going to speak with her on Thursday, to kind of go through and give some thought. And we only have a half an hour, so I can tell you for sure, there's no way we're going to get through this whole three-page list. Tom and I, so the list comprises two chunks of concerns. The, the second half are concerns that we discussed very briefly at our last board meeting that were part of the Lower Hudson Education Coalition handout. And they're more, they're more big picture. The, the first, yeah, the first, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, the first five are items of concern that Tom and I culled from the two, we webinard, we binge webinard today. We did a school boards webinar on the state budget, the governor's budget, and also NASBO or New York State NASBO Business Officers Organization webinar on the same topic. I sent you all an email with a link to a recording of the, of the school boards webinar, which you can look at if you wish and/or at your, at your leisure. That was actually, in terms of items of interest, I think that was the better of the two, only because it addressed issues that were not only specific to the numbers, which is what the NASBO webinar did, but also some of the peripheral items that are connected with the budget. For example, that whole section on state aid in the handout at your place, they all came from the NISBA one, and there are a lot of changes. One of the most notable is that our governor, in his, in his wisdom, took all of the expense-driven aids and folded them into foundation aid. So, it looks like we're getting more, every school district's getting more foundation aid, when in fact, it's, it's basically a shell game. They took this, 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 and dumped it in there, and wow, you're getting an increase in your foundation aid. Well, it all depends on what you call it, and that, I think, is a sham that ought to be brought to the attention of our legislators, because it's disingenuous to say we're getting more foundation aid when we're just getting different aids thrown in there and called foundation. So, anyway, you can, you can read all this yourselves. There are few, there were some other things that are part and parcel with the governor's budget that are, there's another quite ridiculous thing here where you get the same BOCES aid you got last, we got last year, whether we're spending more at BOCES in the coming year or whether we're spending less. So, it's basically freezing your BOCES aid. Whether you buy more BOCES services or fewer, we're going to be, our BOCES aid's going to be frozen. So, that certainly is a disincentive to want to buy services from BOCES and generate the aid because your aid's now frozen. So, I mean, there's some things there that I think our legislators need to go back to their respective houses and say that this is nonsense. It's not really helping school districts, and it's, it's actually hurting them. So, those bullets are things we culled. Also, they're reducing the STAR exemption from last year from 500K to 250K, and next year from, what was it, Tom, from 250K to 200K. So, they're governors gradually lowering the STAR exemption, and we speculate that in a couple of years, there won't be a STAR exemption. It will have dwindled to virtually nothing. STAR is still there, it's not going away, so it's there. But the mechanism is, you're going to have to pay all the money upfront and get a return from New York State for STAR, as opposed to it just being taken off your tax bill. So, this affects your escrow accounts and things of that nature because that's money the escrow bank never collected, and now are being told you have to pay it. So, so it works. I mean, in the end, it's still the same amount, it's just the mechanism is just...
Is it all cash or not?
Yes. Well, here's the reason. On New York State's balance sheet, it looks different. Them giving us the money as STAR aid, okay, that doesn't look good. You're giving aid to your municipality as opposed to giving money back to the individual. Giving back money to an individual, the taxpayer, is on the balance sheet very different than giving aid to a municipality or school district. So, it goes into a different bucket, and it makes us look better at the federal level to show money going back to the individual as opposed to districts getting more aid. It's just a perception.
It's the mechanic...
But it's creating a lot of headaches for a lot of various reasons, from the escrow banks to a lot of people not knowing they had to shell out additional money. Now, the state was very good about getting that check to you, so they were very prompt in giving that STAR to you. So, it wasn't that much of a delay in you getting that money back, but it was to say future years, depending on revenue streams, they may hold it longer, you know, as opposed to it just being taken off your tax bill and the money coming back to us as aid. We also put on the list the craziness that's going on with, with Dutchess County, among a couple of others in this part of the state, not being able to use the voting machines for the school board and budget elections, even though other counties contiguous to us are allowed to. But what we're hearing is Dutchess County doesn't have enough personnel to do this. They don't have enough extra machines because, because of the primary election, those machines have to be impounded for a period of time. But most other counties around us apparently have enough extra machines that that's not a problem. So, we're going to have to use paper ballots for our budget and school board vote this May.
And it'll be a little longer.
Yeah, you know, it'll be, it'll take a little bit longer so that you can spend more time at, at daddy's before we come back here. However, think about a school district, think about a school district like Wappingers and Arlington. They're already talking about having to either count through the night or push off the count to the next day. It's really, it's insane. The last one I want to mention is New York Transparency reporting. This, Tom has been talking about this for, for a couple of years now, whereas we have to break out all of our expenditures by building, which in and of itself isn't, isn't a bad thing. However, New York State has one form of this, and the federal government has, the ESSA has a different form of it. So, what's the solution? You have us do both. It's, it's duplication of effort, and it's, it's just a waste of time. Do one, or do the other. Yeah. So, those are some things that I think we should bring to our, to our legislators' attention. We still have, let's see, the meeting with Cahill is scheduled for Tuesday, February 18th, and attending are Diane, Mark, Liz, Matt, Jackie, and we'll move the finance committee meeting because we really need to meet with these folks. So, if other, if the others can make it, that's great, let us know. If not, we'll, we'll meet without you, but we need to get those. And Assemblywoman Barrett's a whole other story. We'll see if she'll agree to meet with us, or she'll insist on just doing it via the phone with me. So, stay tuned on that news flash. So, I just wanted you guys who are going to this meeting with Serino to have this and look it over before we walk in there, so we have something to say. Yeah, well, Tom did most of the legwork on that.
Joe, I would just add that two things that you left off there that's on that list is the mandate relief and the special education changes, and I think those are very important as well.
Yeah. Good point. I mean, we'll, we'll talk about as many as we can jam in. Cahill'll be easier too, he tends to give us more time.
He has, he has...
Yes, he has, he has better food, so...
Joe, what was the updated date for Cahill?
18?
18. Yeah, it's like 115, right? Wasn't it Whitney? I got it right here. Yeah, 115 to 145. We're only getting a half hour with him too, apparently, so...
February 18th.
Yes.
Historically...
There'll be snow that day.
Yes. That day.
Excuse me?
Historically, has Serino's office been timely with seeing us, or have we had to wait?
No, no, she's been pretty, she's pretty good.
She's been as good as, yeah.
Cahill's office, we have to wait sometimes, but...
Yeah.
I don't want to have to meet in a meeting in the middle.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, timely in terms of starting on time and then again? Yeah, she, they've been pretty good because she, my guess is she's, she's got them stacked up like planes over JFK, so she, she wants to move us out and get the next group in. So, yeah, she's, she's been pretty good about that, actually. Also, in your, we're still under old business, right? So, also, in your packet is the slide deck from the NISBA webinar, just, if you have it, if you want it. If you don't, you can see it on the, on the recording of the webinar, and that's all I have under old business.
Okay. Any other old business, everybody? Okay. Another opportunity for public comment. Okay. Any other?
I have some other others.
I don't, so it's you.
All right, do we all bring our blankies? No, it's only 9 o'clock, it's okay.
Pretty good.
Yeah. So, you may have heard that the regents are holding a series of meetings regarding graduation requirements. They're studying the possibility of redoing graduation requirements, and they're having, they're scheduling a series of meetings across the state in the various regent districts to present and then to get feedback. So, there is one tomorrow that is already booked up. Not that I would be suggesting we attend something on such short notice, but that was one of the first ones, and it's already booked up. The next one, the closest one to us, it's in this little packet of stuff that I, that you have at your place, is on March 11th from, these are all evening meetings, March 11th from 5:00 to 7:00 PM over at Ulster BOCES in New Poles. That's the closest one to us. I suggest we go to the closest one. You can go just pretty much anyplace else in the state if you want to get in a car and drive eight hours, but I would not be interested personally. But I will go to the one on March 11th, so you may want to pencil that in on your calendar. They haven't even started taking reservations for that meeting, so as soon as they do, Whitney will let us know, and if you're interested in going, let her know, and we'll...
What was the time?
5:00 to 7:00 PM.
It's a Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday, the 11th, yeah. Okay. Behind that, in your packets, is a whole bunch of backup information on that particular meeting. So, read it whenever you want to, don't read it, but if you want to know something about what's going to be discussed, that's your, that's your primer on these graduation requirement meetings that the regents are conducting. Okay? Yes?
Do you know when was the last time they changed requirements?
That's a, that's a great question, and I couldn't, I couldn't offhand tell you the most recent, but I mean, they've been changing graduation requirements pretty much...
Every year?
No, 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 no. I'd say maybe about half, about in between.
Okay.
Yeah. And it's, it's not, they've not necessarily been like wholesale, throw everything out and start from scratch, which is kind of what this is sounding like to me, more extensive. Sometimes they're just nibbling around the edges, and sometimes it's more extensive. This seems like it's going to be a bigger deal. So, we, somebody from our district, some bodies from our district need to know what the heck they're talking about, what they're proposing, and what we think of it, because this is an opportunity to, to weigh in, and of course, we, with Regent Johnson having recently passed away, we don't have a regent yet. She was pretty good in that, you know, many of us knew her on a first-name basis. She was, she was a former superintendent, she kind of got it. You know, many of the regents don't really get it, they're not educators, they're, they do other things for a living. She kind of got it, but we don't have her as an advocate anymore, so we're, we need, we all, all as educators, board members, need to track where this is headed. That's all I'm saying. Maybe, maybe it won't be a problem, but just make sure it doesn't turn into a problem.
Joe, do you know, these are limited on how many people can go.
Yeah.
Do you know, like, what size group? I mean, just looking for feedback, is this like...
Again, don't quote me on this, please. I thought they were talking about the group going to the meeting down in Orange County was like 40-people-ish, not like hundreds, not like a dozen.
Right, okay.
So, the last thing, no, second to last thing I want to mention, under other, I put in your packets a very draft 2020, 2021 school year calendar. It's, it's very draft at this point. I would like to bring a recommendation to you at either the second meeting in February or the first meeting in March, so we can get that taken care of and address all the parents who call. who call us wanting to know when school starts next year, when spring break is, so they know when to get their time share re-up, that kind of thing. And we usually do it by late February, early May, early March. Anyway, I provided this to the leadership of all three of our employee bargaining units so they could take a look and give me feedback, although it's, the feedback is strictly advisory, but I appreciate their feedback because sometimes they pick up on stuff that, that maybe I haven't thought about. You will notice, for whatever it's worth, that Labor Day is about the latest Labor Day can be. So we would not bring staff back until Tuesday, September 8th. First day of class, Wednesday, September 9th. No day for baking pies or brining turkeys before Thanksgiving because there just aren't enough days. It's about the tightest calendar you can ever have, so.
And due to contracts, we start after?
Due to contracts, we cannot start before Labor Day unless the bargaining units agree to it. They can agree to it. We can't, we can't force that issue.
Got it, got it.
So we'll, we'll see what kind of feedback we get from our bargaining units and this may look pretty much exactly the way it does today. Also, I want to mention to you that we have February 12th as a placeholder for Superintendent's Conference Day. This is 2021, February 2021. We have had conversations with Pine Plains and Red Hook and we are looking at the possibility of having the same day and doing something collaboratively with all three districts. Whether it actually comes to pass or not, we'll see, but if we don't have the same date, nothing's going to happen. Okay? Once the calendars are adopted, no one's going to want to change the, the date of that, so we'll see. Keep you posted on that. Yeah, Jacqueline?
Have we ever gone to bargaining units with a request for or a suggestion that we start earlier than, and what has happened?
Would you like to answer that question or would you like me? Because I could answer it, but.
Yes, we have. And no, it didn't go anywhere.
Nothing doing?
Yet.
That's all I'm gonna say.
As Mr. Putin would say, yet.
Will it be asking again? This time just?
I'm fairly, I'm fairly confident that it will be discussed. Let's just leave it that way.
Okay, thank you. We've had, was it this year, the first year or what? Had a day in May that we had available for snow, but this.
Well, it's no extra, no extra days.
There's no extra days for that in here.
Hey, it goes right to the recess.
Yeah, I mean, if you look at the bottom of this draft calendar, you'll notice this is kind of in grayscale, the bottom right where we, we list, and that needs to be changed to five emergency days, not six. Well, maybe, maybe I had an old version of this, so don't worry about it. But the only days are the spring break days. Those are the only days you can give back.
The problem with that is if we get snow in March, which happens quite often, then a lot of people already made their spring break plans and it, you know, it's tough to change that.
It'll be worse if it snows in April.
Well, the spring break is in March this, next year, so it's.
How's your mouth?
Having a day in May allowed for that, a little more flexibility, but we definitely lose that.
Yep. So just kind of giving you a heads up. If you have, you know, if anything jumps out at you like, oh my God, you missed this holiday or that, I mean, let me know. I don't think so, but, and I'll get some feedback from the bargaining units. And the last thing I had, which is kind of a spinoff of, I think, personnel and finance committees, is whether the board wants to consider any changes to the format of the budget work sessions, which have previously and traditionally been typically a three-hour Saturday morning go-around on the budget as it exists at that point in time. In some of the discussion, there was discussion about maybe splitting it out and doing two before a board meeting sessions. I just, if we're going to do something different than what we've been doing, we should discuss it and make some decisions. If not tonight, at least by the next board meeting, it's not something we, I mean, that's scheduled for like March 14th, so we can't be doing it the week before. We need to do it pretty, if we're going to make a change, we need to do it pretty soon.
So it was discussed in finance?
Yeah. Came up.
So I'm just gauging how many people have already talked about it.
So Mark and Matt and Steve and Steve and Diane and Jackie.
I mean, typically, we've had the Saturday work session, work sessions, and we've changed it over the, we changed it last year. We changed, we've changed it because the format wasn't really as productive as it could be. I thought last year's was a little bit better, but it was just suggested maybe we move into doing it either before a meeting, after a meeting, another meeting in the evening, you know, that we might not need to take everybody's time on a Saturday to do it. I think we talked about continuing to have, you know, everyone that we need to ask questions of still here, so it wouldn't change that, but maybe just doing it in the evening instead of a whole Saturday session. We might not need as much time as we have in the past.
Diane, why would we need less time?
Well, we changed, we, when we changed the format, it became more like the principals kind of gave a, just an overview of their budget a little bit, so that cut down the time as well. You know, it's, we, I don't think that we, they've been, it was shorter this year, I think, than it had been in the past. So, you know, it was just the thought maybe that like using a Saturday wasn't the best option, you know, wasn't the best time for it, but, you know, depends how everybody feels, you know. Rather do it. So you would prefer to have it on a Saturday than do?
Well, I think we get more of the public in on a Saturday. You know, what Saturday am I here for the budget? That'll be the last.
Steve?
Anyone else?
I'd like to try something different, just for the sake of, you know, different format. I do think it gets very awkward when you're talking about personnel and usually personnel conversations are happening in executive sessions, so I think there's some merit in having those conversations. And I think the way the principals did their budget overview was very helpful and I think that, you know, is probably appropriate for, for the public part of it, but I'd like to have a little bit deeper conversation in executive session with them.
I'm open to either. I like the idea of experimenting, you know, trying to continue improving and fine tuning.
I don't think attendance is driven by the day. I think it's more driven by the budget, right? When there's a shortfall and there's interest, that's when we tend to get a lot of people and I think that would happen on a Tuesday as well as a Saturday, honestly, but, you know, think about it.
As it was explained to me, I thought it made some sense, but then again, I hadn't ever attended one of the earlier sessions, but.
Throw a videotape.
I'll check that out when I get home. When I get home tonight, I'll check that out. But it seemed, as it was described as a potential option, it seemed to make some sense.
Mark, you've been around for all of them. Not all of them, but, you know, a lot of them.
It doesn't matter to me.
Is this me that has?
Yeah, I was at the tour.
I'm fine doing it in May when I'm already here and then having that opportunity to discuss some things during the meeting. So we can do an executive session and discuss something. At least it'll be fresh as opposed to taking it from a Saturday and then bringing it on later. I think it's easier to discuss it and just work through to get it done as opposed to give it all.
In different years, you know, some years, you know, we don't have enough time. We could go over and then some years it's quicker, so that, you know, it does change a little bit, but.
Well, I think, I think Steve hit the nail on the head, though. I think it depends on how tough a budget is, not only with the attendance, but also with the amount of time. You know, there's more Angstein, there's more Hemmon and Hawn, and I think last year it was a relatively low-key budget, so it went quickly and I'm not sure, I don't recall exactly what the turnout was like last year, but not, not as, not as well-attended as some other years.
I think last year, the administrators and personnel may have outnumbered the number of community members.
Yeah, that's, that's.
It hasn't been that way in a while.
Yeah, you're probably right. And I would just say that if we're going to change the format, then the board budget calendar needs to be changed to reflect that, because what we put out to the public as to when this meeting or these meetings are going to be, you know, again, we can't drop that on them at the last minute and say, oh, by the way, we're doing it differently this year, so we need to get that out there.
So if we made a change, which it sounds like we're mostly looking to make a change, I don't think we would do it on a regular board meeting night, right? Because we.
Well, that's what we talked about.
So we are.
It's up to you guys.
That's fine, I just.
It's up to you guys.
And I would say, maybe I would just say you need to look at the, so it's not an agenda night like this where we have to, or we have any other early executive session or anything, so just trying to see if we have one that makes sense to add it.
We talked about doing it on two different nights, correct?
Correct.
So.
Okay, okay.
And that was the discussion anyways.
Yes, yes.
So what I plan to do is to put together a modified Board of Ed, or Budget Calendar to present on the next board meeting. So you have two weeks still to decide what you want to do, because you can always table it and say, no, I want to do something else.
Right.
So I can go out, look at two board meetings, look to do like one hour beforehand, starting at 6:00. One potentially being an executive session for discussion of personnel. And then the other one would be coinciding with a night in which we are having principal reports, so our principals will be here and have the other administrators here, starting at 6:00, and we'll be able to, you know, as we would on that Saturday, be able to talk to each of the administrators to find out what's new and exciting about their budget, what they may cut from their budget, and be able to ask questions.
I mean, if that's how the boards inclined, or the majority of the boards inclined, we can put together a schedule and then you could always change it if you don't like it. But I think, I think making a decision by February 11th is, makes sense, because that's only about a month before when we would have done the Saturday morning session, so we got to get the word out there.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
Well, that answered my question.
Okay.
Okay. No other others?
That's it?
For me.
I don't have any. All right. We'll move to action items. Anyone want to move any, move anything from the consent agenda? Okay. Can I have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve the following consent items?
Second. Hang on. Could we table 6.1.6?
Yes.
I'll explain that in executive session, but.
Yeah.
So I don't want you to approve 6.1.6.
So approve the consent agenda as amended with the table.
Yeah. Yeah.
Second. All those in favor? That motion passes.
Thank you.
Motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve an extension of the appointment of Christine Furlander as a leave replacement in the position of grade three elementary classroom teacher at the Chancellor Livingston Elementary School, having commenced on October 10th, 2019 through February 13th, 2020, now extended through March 27th, 2020, retroactive to January 2nd, 2020, at a salary of step 1 MA plus 12, $62,433 prorated in accordance with the Board Policy 9410, instructional substitute compensation and the RTA salary schedule for 2019-20. This appointment is to fill the vacancy created by the extension of the leave of absence granted to Megan Kraft, grade three elementary classroom teacher at the Chancellor Livingston Elementary School.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes. Upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve as a first reading and consideration Board Policy Number 5690, student voter registration.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? That motion passes. Motion to approve the following resolution in recognition of Joseph L. Fallon. Whereas Joseph L. Fallon has served the Rhinebeck School District, the Rhinebeck Community, and above all Rhinebeck students since August 1998, whereas the Rhinebeck Central School District and Rhinebeck students have benefited greatly from his tireless leadership and sage guidance during his many years of service. Now therefore be it hereby resolved that the Rhinebeck Central School District Board of Education records in minutes of this meeting its deepest heartfelt thanks and appreciation to Joseph L. Fallon for his dedicates, decades of faithful and distinguished service to the Rhinebeck Central School District, Rhinebeck students and the Rhinebeck community, and expresses its collective appreciation and admiration for his leadership and for his long and devoted service, and extends to him this statement of appreciation. And also therefore be it hereby resolved that the Rhinebeck Central School District, Rhinebeck Central School District Board of Education hereby dedicates the School District Auditorium and names said instructional and public space, the Joseph L. Fallon Auditorium in recognition, recognition therefore.
Second.
Any discussion? Say, Joe, we wanted to read this into the minutes as it is your last official board meeting as our full-time superintendent. I want to thank Matt for his handiwork and.
Thanks, Matt. I take it around the edges a little bit, but.
And then we had to add something.
But thank you.
But just we wanted to officially make sure something was noted about our appreciation for you as our superintendent.
Thank you all. Thank you all.
Thank you.
You don't get the wordsmith your own dedication.
It's kind of writing, it's like writing your own tombstone, you know? Yeah, this is what I want on here.
It's not, it's not easy to keep a secret from.
Yeah, I know, I know. Sorry about that.
Any other?
Don't look at that wall.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Did we do it? No. Yes.
You voted?
Yeah. But we didn't vote. We didn't vote. Yeah, all those in favor. Okay. Just before we move to executive session, I just want to make like one announcement that pertains to this. So we're going to be officially dedicating the auditorium on February 21st.
Friday night.
At, I want to say the wrong time.
6:30.
At 6:30 and honoring Joe in that evening, so hopefully everyone can be there. And they'll be.
February 21st.
February 21st at 6:30. There'll be official like announcement sent out to all staff and to the community and posted in some public areas. It'll be a nice night.
Sounds great.
Can I have a motion to move into executive session for contract discussion?
Uh, yeah. Yeah. I'll do it.
Second. All those in favor?
All right.